They're called the owner of the Lowell City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, October 19th at seven o'clock. Roll call please.
Mayor Bennett? Councilor Weathers here, Councilor Stratus. Councilor Harris, Councilor Myers were absent.
We have a forum. Let's have a legislative meeting. My political allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, individual for liberty and justice. Everybody see any changes to the agenda that need to be made or like? Not seeing anything. First item up is the consent agenda. An item could be moved to be discussed as the first item of business if you'd like, what we have before, so the consent agenda is an actual report for office 2021. Check register for September 2021. Approval of amendments for September 21st of 2021. Regular meeting and executive session. Approval of amendments for October 5th, 2021. Regular meeting and executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion as second. Daleman and Maureen. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have public comments from anyone. Not hearing, not seeing any. Council comments, anybody? Not hearing, not seeing anything. Next up is the. Is the city administrators recording? That's on page seventy-four in your packet.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city councilors, members of the public. Give a brief update on my activities since the last meeting. We completed the town halls. Meeting and the household survey for the library. We're going to talk about the project a little bit more tonight. Park renovation projects. We have a tree plan in place from our landscape architect. The Parks and Recreation Committee met last night, but there wasn't a forum, but I did have agreement among the members present to have a community. Donation program to help pay for the project and I'll be sending out more information on that. Attaining quotes right now to, from a landscape firm to actually purchase trees and put them in the ground, so I'll be sending that information out as well. And I'm looking at having a joint meeting with the Parks Committee and city council. At your November work session to talk about that program as well as getting some of the holiday events. Some direction on that and getting those scheduled and up and running. Historical Research Associate, the Archaeological Consultant is going to be doing fieldwork at the park October 25th. East Main Street property. We're still working out the contractual details. I will plan on having that contract. At your, at your November 2nd meeting, having a special meeting in conjunction with the work session to approve me to sign those documents. We still have a few steps to work out before we can sign the deal. The option agreement, for instance, I've signed that. It's now at the county awaiting their signature. We have to have that in place before I actually sign the sale agreement. It also said that they were requesting a level one environmental assessment, so I need to confirm with our broker if they still want to have that done. It's, it's. It's a, it's a minor detail that we can take care of, but we're steadily working on that. With the landscaping, both of you approved for vegetation removal on the property below Sunridge Lane. Grandland Scaping is done. Says here they went back twenty feet from the property line. They went back further than that. They sprayed some herbicide. They're going to come out in spring and summer to continue the herbicide treatment, so we can get that under control. We're looking at a movie night, November and December. We'll form that up and get that out to the public. We have a burn to learn event for the vacant, that vacant house on East Main Street, November 6th. Holiday decorations that you approved have arrived and they look pretty good.
Both, both the banners and the lighted.
All of them. Awesome. All of them. Stop by City Hall. I'd love to show you.
It's crazy with all the supply chains that.
Well, they.
Some things come through and some things don't.
Well, they said they would be pushing November just in regular orders, so for them to come back with.
It wasn't, it wasn't just stuff that grabbed off the shelf. So, you know, it says Lowell welcomes you, so.
Yeah, that's even better.
Name on it, stuff like that. So, there had to be some extra work on it, so.
Stop by City Hall. I'd love to show it to you.
I'd love to see it.
Looking forward to seeing them up.
Any, any questions for me? That concludes my report.
Anybody in the panel? Thank you. Okay, next up, Public Works, if you have something.
Yeah, I didn't put anything in. Back it, I really didn't have anything, but. I'm going to give you guys a few updates. A few things happened since Friday last week. Normally, when I'm pretty much back for it, so biggest thing, as everybody here is aware, we began providing support. To the middle four complex fire response efforts in late August this year. We sold the potable water as a hydrant on North Side Town and we also eventually began taking the gray water. It's a process we've done several times in the year past since the June fire. We executed the invoice. Everything's in operation. We approved and payment was sent out, so we should see something within the next two to three weeks. Just give you a quick glance. Sold one hundred twenty-four thousand six hundred seventy-five gallons. Our water is clearly in the beer that comes to the total of twelve thirteen oh nine, four hundred thirteen dollars. Graywater disposal, we took sixty-nine thousand five hundred gallons and fifteen cents per gallon, that brings up ten thousand four hundred twenty-five, so. Both the fund we split, obviously, that was going to regular water sewer sales, so our volume number on those. One other thing, just to touch on the work that Grandland Skipped, did a little summary of what Jeremy was talking about. They, they very aggressive. It looks very nice. It went back. Forgot to mention this too, I'm sorry, Jeremy. Very hefty day. They'll be back out on the second, third and fourth. To try to prep a little more and then just verify what they did and then make a plan for the herbicide application, so. If, I'm telling you guys, myself, the city administrator and all staff, including the summer hire, spent an entire morning up there. Barely made a dent. Myself and the city administrator went up there after the first day and it is impressive. The ghosts don't have nothing on them, so. One other thing today, staff and myself tackled some water leaks. I've been talking to you guys about the parts finally came in. Two of them were very major leaks. We got them both wrapped up, so that's a good thing. And then we had a pretty significant leak when I fessed them inside. Meter update, we have one hundred forty-nine meters installed of the new meters. I will be coming to you guys next meeting work session to talk about possible purchase of one hundred meters that we put in the budget. Just waiting on button up the numbers with the contact, contract challenges to make sure we spend a little bit of money. This first quarter, as you guys all know, through a current water break, we've had some unexpected repairs. So, as long as the numbers are there, we'll still be on the CIP, otherwise we might hold some bad. And that's all I have. Tim, a quick update on the burn house. We did get started to take the windows out. We got pin and ball valve. First ten were super easy. The fire department donated the wood, block them up, so we didn't have to do any of that. The back two are just going to take a little bit more reset, kind of trim off a little bit. We did get permission to shut the road down, so we will be shutting, just so as we're here, we'll be shutting down Pioneer at the Main Street intersection, deterring traffic east or west. We're just going to run a flat hose right across the street, so we'll close that entire block through traffic on the day of the event. Got permission from the, support from the county on that.
They'd be real.
Yep.
Read in the paper, sorry, read in the paper where. Lowell was selected as one of these PFAS test sites. Do you know when that's going to occur here? They didn't really say.
So, they sent a letter over here in the rural group about this. They did send a letter out last week from DQ. It's a voluntary, we're chose, so we're going to do it. And from what I got from the letter, it's going to be very similar to Blue G analogy. They will supply the bottles and materials. We will just simply collect them and then prepay, ship them to DQ laboratory and say, I'm going to get a stack result.
When does that start?
They're thinking late winter, possibly early, early spring. So, yeah, exactly. They're supposed to be reaching out with dates, because they want to try to capture certain things happening in the late, so. I will, when it comes time, I'll definitely be available on that. And then for share the results, we get the, just because it'd be good to know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Do we test for that in our normal testing?
We do not.
Okay.
No. There are some of the annual tests and the every three year and nine year tests that we do encompass some of the other stuff, but we do not do this specifically on, because it's, it's a pretty big test, test for a lot of things. Yeah, very, very sporadically they, we do the tests. It's not on a regular basis.
So, other than the cost of collection, they're paying for all the.
They're paying, testing everything by the bar, a little bit of labor. Their blue green algae roughly is about fifteen minutes of labor each day, so. Mental shadow was resolved with this and it'd be a good thing to talk about. Yep.
Thank you.
I did walk down there, it's supposed to me to where they, I've got all those brooches and stuff, and I know what we asked for was twenty foot along the side there, but I tell you, I've walked that area before with all those vines and stuff and it, it tech up the hillside and some places, they actually went down like twenty yards or better. Which was, I think is good, because that's all going to be private property, if it's not, you know, right now it belongs some to the Nelsons, but it's going to be private property and the only in grass, egress on that is a seven foot wide walking trail into it, so there's no way to get any kind of mechanized equipment in there. Probably after now, next year, that's going to have people owning those lots and things like that, and there's no way to get any kind of. Equipment in there to do work, so it's good that we got it all cut out. We're going to start spraying it to keep it controlled and just go from there. Go ahead.
So, it's just, it's the railroad right away? And up the hill?
It's not a driveway, it's just a walkway.
No, railroad right away.
Uh huh.
That old path. It's up the hill from that?
Right.
Okay, those aren't buildable lots, though.
No, but exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, so right now we access to the black walk, because it's so steep to the railroad side.
Right.
We are working, Jeremy's working on a grant currently for cleaning up the railway, for fire wise, and just a bunch of things. I did talk with the contractor that turned it in a quote about giving us a road right where his pointer is there. Is the least amount of slope and that, excuse me, that would be not only for maintenance of the park, because it's a city responsibility, but also it kind of coincides with the projected plans, right? And it's the open space kind of high control thing. So, I'll get with the engineer. They've already scoped out some pole works and stuff. They improved the surface there, but yeah, there's a really slight gradual kind of there, right below those two homes that we can.
Right.
Come up and have access to, but yeah, once. Then it's correct. Once we have those lots developed, we will lose all access. To that lower section, especially with equipment. You can obviously walk down there, but yeah, with equipment, we will.
You can't, you can't drive down the railroad right away?
You can, but it's forty-sixty feet above it like this, that that park is way above it, yeah. And the people that came and did the quote for the grant that we're buying for. They surveyed all, all four acres you see there and it took them two and a half days. I tried to jump up there with them to see a couple of the reeds, but I'm not that.
So, I presume we exhausted the funds that the Nelsons put in deposit for that future maintenance?
Not, not entirely. There's still some left, but it took out a big chunk of it.
Little bit probably for the spring, for the spring activities, just to, for the tech up, but yeah, it's going to do.
But if we can stay on top of the taxes.
Yeah, and we will, one of the plans that the CIA myself discussed is we're going to get somebody, either myself or a staff member, will get herbicide certified, so that we can do it in a greater quantities other than, you know, this many, just a little portion of the time, so. We'll get the paperwork. It's, it's not bad you set the pipe or give them, so we'll work on that. It'll be nice to get the parks developed, you know, be able to treat them, seed them and everything, and that all falls under the herbicide application. So, yeah, I think it's necessary that we get one. It's not super expensive to maintain, so, yeah, I think it's appropriate, but with the way the town's going and the park is even a beautiful one, I think it'd be smart if we go in.
Plus the herbicides, if you put those on early, the weeds don't want to grow as much. It's going to be less cleanup.
Yep.
For the, uh, you know, around July.
You guys can find just a tree in this alley.
Yep, yep. Yeah, in larger plants, instead of doing half an alley, you know, every other day or something, you can literally knock them all out in the early spring and then real minor of people on that. Exactly. Right aways, a lot of them. Yeah. Yep.
That's a good thing. Next up is the police report. I think we have two months' worth of activities here on page seventy-six. I see they were busy in September. That's a good fact. Thank you. Next up is new business discussion with Kurt Wilson, a Wilson architect on the Maggie Osvidgill Library and City Hall renovation project. Mr. Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our architect Kurt Wilson has a presentation. He gives a background. When Kurt and I met. Once council had decided upon an option to discuss how to get moving on this, we both agreed that. There are some advantages to option one C, which is related to one B, that are worth having a conversation about. Before we get too far into this, so he's here tonight to walk you through some of that information as well as to give an update on the project schedule and budget as well. So, with that, Kurt, I'll turn it over to you.
Great. Thank you, Jeremy, and thank you, everybody. You hearing me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead, if I can, and share screen. Are you seeing my screen with the schedule?
We got it.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to be relatively brief in my comments and please let me know if you have questions. But we are, as Jeremy and I are working on moving forward, we're looking at schedule and, and, you know, design areas that we know we need to refine. And just making sure we understand budget and relation to scope and also any funding restrictions. So, generally speaking. We're looking at, if you can see these dates here, we're looking at. By the middle of January, having the drawings and bid documents available for both bidding and submitting for permit.
Kurt, could you zoom in a little bit more?
Over there?
Could you zoom in a little bit more?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to show you this in a little bit more detail. Just overall picture here. So, then we're looking at bidding and permitting, January and February. Construction then starting in March and generally can start in March and, you know, assuming we get cooperative bidders in terms of. Proceeding relatively soon after the bids are open, we're, we're looking at some time in the late summer fall to get done, but we're essentially assuming about five months for construction is reasonable. And then, so that's the general timeframe that we're working on right now as, as we move forward. A little bit more specifically. Schedule wise, we're, we'll assume we're going to start here relatively soon, getting back into the full activity of the design effort with all of our consultants. You know, after about four weeks, as the schedule shows, sometime in late November, we'll be doing another updated comprehensive cost estimate and give ourselves time to review it together and just make sure that we're. Feeling comfortable about all the things that we're doing and as we move forward, then we have about four or five weeks to wrap up, you know, whenever you're doing work in between Thanksgiving and, and the end of the year, it's just, you got to give yourself a little more time to make sure you got everybody's. Attention with schedules and the whole holiday schedules and all that kind of stuff. And then more, more specifically bidding and permit. We're going to have to work with the North West Code Pros, who will be doing the building review just on their timeframes. I'm assuming right now we're about in a, you know, something under a couple of months there for a project of this size, they're going to be able to accommodate. And, but that's a question that we're going to have to work through with them. Schedule wise. There are, these four items are the things that I think are, we need to get a little bit more. Been a little bit as I'm talking about, whether it's with this group or whether it's with, with the, the design team or whatnot, but we're going to need to, relatively soon, we're going to need to. Get, make sure we're all going in the same direction as relates to the space plan. As we get into November, we're going to, you know, we'll be continuing to focus on making sure we understand. The extent of the mechanical, electrical systems and to some plumbing systems that we're, we're incorporating in the project and just make sure we got the right handle on what we're doing there. As we get, before we get into the middle of December, I want to make sure that the, there's an understanding of what the library furniture is that we're working with. Both in terms of getting a handle on, on budget for that, you know, whether we're going to purchase furniture, whether we're going to have a local cabinet shop make it. Jeremy and I are talking about. Working with Oregon Correction Enterprises, which used to be referred to as Prison Industries, but the, there's an, Oregon Correction Enterprises is basically through the Oregon Department of Corrections, has a. Business setup that does all kinds of things, including casework, printing. They, they can fabricate a lot of different things. I worked on them on two projects in the past and with generally good success and we're going to be meeting with them relatively soon to talk about how, if that might be a possibility for library furniture. And then as we get a little bit further, we're going to need to make sure we're working with city legal counsel that our procurement requirements in the bid documents are just meeting the city's needs, reflecting. And acknowledging current requirements, procurement requirements. There's a lot as it comes to bidding of construction and so that always requires some work to make sure that we've got it right, so we're going to get that process started relatively soon. But, you know, these are the things we, you know, we, we know we need to get our hands around as we move forward. In some ways, these are kind of the decision points as I look at it from a design perspective. Budget wise, I'm not going to go through all of the budget categories that are in roughly four hundred thousand that we had, that have been identified for the option one area. This is the information that we reviewed in August as we were comparing the different options. And one of the things that Jeremy and I did last week is we did, we went through this in a lot of detail and he asked me, where are the areas that you're, you're, where is your confidence level? And on all of these items and where are the areas we really got to be paying attention to? So, these are the areas that I've highlighted here. I'm going to zoom in here a little bit, but. I'm, when we developed the scenarios of option one, option two and option five for costing, there was a part of the strategy of having these different options was to allocate different levels of budget to some of these things that are discretionary. Option one, to keep it as low cost as possible, assumed in the work that was done in August that we were going to reuse library furniture, bookshelf. Option five had, you know, a, a more generous budget for the library furniture and option two is in the middle. You know, we, we met with Penny Hummel, our library consultant yesterday. She described our, the existing furniture is essentially, you know, basement level. Library stacks, bookshelves, those kinds of things. And we really ought to make sure that we are thinking about how to properly get fund the, the library equipment that we need. So, that's an area I want, I want to make sure that we don't. We focus on here relatively soon. I'm also, you know, just simply remain concerned with our approach to mechanical and the mechanical system in this building. We have over your heads, we have two, we have ductwork. Like what's referred to as flexible ductwork that's serving the mechanical systems. As we put walls in the building, we're going to have to change zoning. This feels like it's a light number to me, so that's another area we're going to be focusing on. And then. The, the fourth, third area to highlight is just making sure that we probably need to be a little bit more robust in the amount of budget we allocate to the security systems for the building. So, we're looking at some options there, including, you know, the, the, the door lock system, motion detectors and security cameras and some level of, some, something for all of those things that we're talking about. And then simply other project costs and just making sure what are the costs that are going to happen for the project moving forward and, and what do we need to make sure that the city has access to to move this project forward? If you recall, the, the other project costs were established as a percentage of construction, but the reality of life, and, and, and we had, you know, options one, two and five, and we used a simple straight line twenty-five percent increase. It might have been twenty-two. My mind's gone blank on that. That is, it's in that range, but project costs aren't all literally proportionate to the cost of construction. And so, after going through this a little more detail, I think this number's a little low. And we're just going to need to make sure that we, we've got that covered. So, that's part of what Jeremy and I are talking about right now, and just making sure we got a handle on these things. And those are the areas that I want to make sure that we are working on and looking at with a little bit more focus. And then I'm going to just keep going and then we can just take some questions here. So. What Jeremy mentioned that we've got an option one B and then an option one C, so as I understand it, the council. Motion that was approved at the last meeting made reference to one B. And I want to make sure if, if, if that was relative to option one over option five, that's one thing, but if it's literally making, selecting option one B, I want to make sure that we, we haven't. We, we talked about the option one C that came up in our August meeting. So, essentially, this is what we've been talking about. That's one B. We are basically putting a, a wall in at about the location here. About where the, the, the guests are sitting. City Hall is in this corner. The library in green is in this corner. The, the lobby, restrooms are common areas. They were made and then would carve out a corner in the lobby for storage that's allocated to City Hall. One of, one of the conversations in August, as we were, just as we eliminated option two and we're looking at one and five. Option one was, was identified as a transitional solution to get to a more real, larger or different or accommodate more City Hall space. It's, you know, got a, a small conference room that wouldn't accommodate the meeting that you're having now. Very, very minimal storage and so the idea of having a City Hall. Something more than this for City Hall, something has been discussed. I think during the town hall, people had referenced, you know, that as well and, you know, different ideas of a freestanding building or whatnot. Some, someone had mentioned, and it doesn't matter who mentioned, who brought up the good idea, but the idea was if we do an option one. Let's make sure that we're looking at how to, how to incorporate option one, so that in the event in the future, when City Hall functions were someplace else, how does the library best grow into the building? By putting every, all the built services in this end of the building, it does make it very difficult for, as City Hall goes, moves out, for the library to kind of occupy all of the building. So, the idea that is reflected in option one C was discussed and it really has two primary elements. It moves the staff workroom and the service area into the northeast corner away from the City Hall space. It probably takes the existing door that we can see by and council Weathers. Right now and, and creates that as maybe a more prominent entrance to the library. But it allows the conference room to grow a little bit. It, if I say that, of course, is removing some library square footage, but it's growing so that it can have generally equal access from the library side and City Hall side. So, this does two things, this does three things for us. It provides that space to be a little bit. It provides that space to be a little bit more multipurpose and that it's serving city hall and the library. It's providing a little larger of a city hall or excuse me, of a, of a meeting space and maybe it could accommodate more meetings. You know, the size as it's drawn here, maybe not the meeting that you're having now, but something like that. It's a little bit more flexible. It also, um, goes from a city hall specific space to a common space. And that's important when we look at the Ford Foundation grant. And so, um, everything else is the same, um, you know, in terms of the, the, the improvements. The, the real cost difference here is there might be a little bit more wall. We're also adding another door, you know, there's a few, there's probably under four thousand dollars of improvements in what I described. Probably offset by the, um, the, 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 the funding allocation from the Ford founding grant. And then what would happen in the future if city hall was not in this building, whether it got added on to the east, it got. Located on a different part of the site or whatever might happen. Relatively simply, these two walls could come out. Everything else could remain, furniture could get taken out, but those walls come out. And then, um, the library can pretty easily expand into this space, utilize what is would now be the city administrator's space to another. Meeting space or group activity area. So one C is probably a little bit more flexible in terms of its expansion capabilities or as a library grows. And, and then just to help put that into context. This is an effort to allocate costs between options one B and one C. Between the library and the common space, which is, which are uses are improvements that are eligible for the Ford family funding. And the city hall administrative space, the fun spaces that are not. And, and, um, I'm, I won't go through each line item, but I'll just say the distinction here is that in one B. City Hall occupies thirty-three percent of the building area. Not twenty, twenty-nine, twelve is the area, uh, twenty-nine, fifteen, somewhere in that range, just a little over twenty-nine hundred square feet. So thirty-three percent of that is city hall in option one B. And option one C. City Hall, the, the purple area is reduced to twenty-eight percent by moving the, the, the configuration of the meeting room. Being, um, accessed from both sides. So that allocation is a little different. This, uh, matrix is then just taking the construction costs for each item and allocating them. Between either city hall and common spaces or excuse me, library and common spaces or city hall. In most cases, these are just directly proportionate to the square footage. In some cases, you know, like doors, windows where we can quantify that easy, if I'm looking at the drawing. The, the ratio was calculated a little bit differently. As we move forward, by the way, as we get into our next cost estimate, we're going to more specifically format the cost estimate. To more accurately measure the distinction between what can be funded by that grant and what can't. But when we get down here, um, again, construction costs, we're looking at, uh, you know, based on the numbers we looked at in the other. Sheet, we're about three fifteen. Other project costs at almost eighty. And again, these numbers might, um, need to increase some that. With our, our amount that's around four hundred thousand. The distinction in, in option one. B, the city hall spaces account for about a hundred and twenty thousand of the four hundred thousand. And option one C, this, the city hall spaces account for about a hundred and eight thousand of the four hundred thousand. So that's, the intention there is to, to, to help understand the allocation of the city hall costs, but also how that applies to options one. One B and one C. So with that, I'm, I'm what I had intended to, uh, present to you and I'd just like to answer any questions you may have or. Any, any observations that you have. We don't have to make any decisions tonight. I just want you to be thinking about this as we move forward. This, you know, this space plan, this, you know, whether we go B or C relatively straightforward to go in either direction. And I think there's time to talk through that. But I just want to answer your questions, uh, at this point. And I'll stop sharing.
But this is a lot of logic behind his presentation. I think the question is, is can the city hall, um, you know, uh, still have functional operations and comfortableness in that with this transition from one B to one C?
Looks like the twinkle area is a little bit larger. It's only probably they get two people back to back maybe there.
I was just worried that the walls were, you were proposing taking out the walls now. So that was my biggest concern. So I'm happy to hear that you're not taking. You're not proposing to take those walls out now because that would create havoc with city staff. So I didn't. Get that from the materials. So I appreciate, you know, trying to, um. Qualify more space because again, in that conference room, it's not utilized by the city council very often, you know, and so to have it be available for. Summer reading or, um, you know, some puppet shows and that kind of stuff. I, I still think it's real presumptuous though to assume that we're going to have a separate city hall at this point because that might be years down the road. And we need, need to do what's best for what we're talking about right now. But I think for all the other reasons that, um, you've mentioned and people have chimed in about, I, I, I think that's good. I, I came with an open mind trying to. Now that I know those walls aren't being proposed to come down now, that's a, a good thing.
I like it.
The part, you know, what about that? The part about the furniture though is a little offensive to me because for somebody to. You know, this, this community and again, I'm old school, so forgive me. I never thought I'd be in this role. I was always a thirty-year-old that was talking about new ideas, but I find myself in a different spot. But we've done a lot in this community, building this community with volunteers, and we've done a lot of good work with cabinet making and, and donations. And to call those bookshelves basement quality or whatever it was that, what was mentioned basement level. That's offensive to me. Just so you know, I gotta be honest with you. That's really a thing. And, and I'm Maggie Osvid was one of my best friends in the world and, um, she'd be offended.
My, my, my apologies for that. And I did need to say that. I think the, I think the, the other point, the other comment that we've been talking about related to the furniture. Is getting furniture that's in the stacks in the library space that is on casters wheels so that they can move around. And, um, that needs to be built, you know, and so that way that's, that the library space could be used for something like a, a staff meeting. Or a council meeting. Um, and so that's one thing, um, you know, so. Yeah, I think looking at, uh, options to, um, provide more or new furniture still needs to be looked after the library. I, I apologize for my description. That wasn't necessary.
And, and forgiven. I mean, we're all, you know, doing this for the betterment of the community, but. Again, I think it came out loud and clear when we were talking about the public hearing about our culture and our. Climate here. We don't want to be Portland. We don't want to be Seattle. We don't want to be this stuff. And if it's going to have Maggie Osgood's name on it. It needs to reflect. You know, that sort of stuff. I don't mean low rate. I just mean that it doesn't have to match to some urban standard by some organization that says this is how you have to do things. Sometimes we do things that are handcrafted. Yeah, it's got great utility and it's handcrafted by local people that donate that and we don't have to go buy a bunch of stuff. That conforms to some, um, national library standard. So I, I, I want this to have some character that reflects Maggie Osgood. Otherwise let's take her name off of this and then.
That's reasonable. We've heard that, uh, in the town halls and the other meeting that we had that, uh. The importance of, uh, keeping the hometown look, the hometown feel. So, uh, and, uh. I, I can't disagree with you. I think that, uh, that's probably where the community is, would be with you on that point. It would be nice to have new shiny. Everybody likes new shiny, but, uh, also we have to realize the community likes the, uh. To a degree, kind of the rustic look, the, the self-built, uh, the, what surrounds us, you know, and, uh.
We got cabinet makers around.
I think, uh, yeah, that's a decision whenever we get into the actual furniture layout part of it, uh, later on, uh, in the next month or so. I think that's something that, uh. Looked at by people then that would be interested in volunteering their time, services and materials to, uh, actually build it. And I think, uh. There's enough Maggie, like you say, Maggie friends out there that would be interested in cutting, uh, a, a library together and, uh, you know. Casters are sold by themselves, so they can do that or, or, you know, we can, we can put them on casters.
Yeah, we took all the, we took all the tables at the grain and did all the casting. We even put the casters on ourselves and our tables will run there. What I would say, Kurt, is we could take this as an opportunity to maybe take that off the yellow area and take some of that savings that would be offered there and ship them to the. Mechanical, electrical, plumbing systems that you also have concerns with having the correct funding to pull those off of the level. Those are more long-term concerns. The furniture we can address as a community as we go down the road. So we can make a positive out of this and say, hey, this offers some cost savings. You're in a community that wants to live with. With more utilitarian style furnishings in, in the, in the new library. So that offers us some money to shift elsewhere for long-term investment, mechanical, electrical and plumbing system.
And we just had a cabinet shop moving on the hill, so. Might as well.
One, one thing I just, you know, I put in my mouth, kind of took this, uh, uh, conversation about the furniture in the wrong direction and, and I, I, I truly apologize for that. But the point here really that I was wanting to make was that when we did the conceptual designs. The, the way that the furnace, the library was laid out didn't vary from one option to the other. They all. Were incorporating, um, a some amount of, of bookshelves and some, some tables and some work, some computer stations and kind of a mixture of spaces. The existing library has a much higher percentage of bookshelves than, uh, most other surfaces and that should be explored. We're also assuming that the bookshelves that are in the middle of the space were, um, under four feet, forty, forty-two inches. Uh, so that, that there was good view and vision and circuit and, and both in terms of just, you know. Perceiving the space for people who are in it, but also supervision. So there's decisions about the extent of furniture. That have to be decided, not only who's going to make it, what the design of the furniture is itself, but the extent of the furniture. And it also will impact the location of windows and the quantity of windows because, you know, every place we put something on the wall. Everything we do on the wall potentially impacts the amount of storage we have for books and other activities.
Other questions? Well, what's before us is, uh, going from option B, one B to one C. I like what I see in one C and how we put this, all the walls up in a way that they could be drawn down whenever we move out. And it's, uh, like I say, it puts the noise areas on each end of the building. On the, uh, west for the city hall, east for the library, for the entries and stuff like that. The middle would be quiet. So I like that idea. With that in mind, I'd like to move to amend the motion approved by October fifth meeting relating to the selection of a library and city hall design option by selecting design option one C. Do I have a second?
I'm not going to second. I feel like we should have the full council here to make that decision.
Well, I'll second it for further discussion then.
We have a motion and second for discussion.
What's your concern in terms of the?
I, I have no concern personally. I'm, I'm in favor of the transition to one B and one C. I think there's logic behind it. I'm just not comfortable making the decision without the energy system.
Did you get any questions from the two counselors that weren't able to be here? Are there any concerns that you received from them?
I did discuss with counselor Harris. She provided an, an advance notice and. I can't speak for counselor Harris, but she seemed amenable to the change. Uh, with counselor Myers, I received notice tonight and haven't had a chance to discuss with him.
Will it hold anything up if we? You're, we're gonna, at the work session, we're going to have a special meeting. So we have another opportunity to.
Just the timetable with them.
Yeah, the, I can't move forward on with item three on your agenda with the fourth foundation unless I have a decision.
Well, in that case, I change my life.
Well, and that's why I second the motion.
I'm, 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 if it's going to help move the timetable forward, I think that's it. I, I, I can't. I honestly can't, you know, I don't want to put words in their mouth, but I don't think they would be objectionable.
Yeah, I mean, if they had raised serious concerns and said, you know, I can't be there, but here's my serious concerns, that would be different to me than not.
I didn't receive any correspondence to that.
And, uh, I talked to Gail at a separate function and she advised me that she wasn't coming. And I told her that the city administrator advised. Had already told me that she wasn't coming and I, I told her that she had any comments or anything to give it to him to provide for us tonight, uh, if she had anything on it and. And she said she had looked through it and, uh, that's, and that was it. She didn't say yes, no, or anything else. I just said, take it back to the city administrator. So.
I'd like to keep the timeline moving if it affects our, our, um, you know, presentation to the Ford family foundation. That could be. Two, three weeks, months delay by time at all or chow. So especially the holidays.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor of motion to amend the motion? Uh, approved at the October fifth meeting relating to the selection of a library and the city hall design option by selecting design option C. Signified by saying aye, aye. Three ayes, I heard.
All right.
With, uh, with, uh.
No, I think that sums it up, Kurt. So as you just saw, the city council approved the option one C and. Uh, the two of us, Kurt, will, will, um, we can set up a time to discuss how to move forward.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you, Kurt. Night.
I actually also think that, um, the concerns that were, um. In my opinion, in the majority during the, um, town hall we had regarding this, the shifting approximately thirteen thousand dollars of, of, uh, funding from. Alone to, uh, getting grant funded.
It's a good thing.
Would be, yeah, would be favorable to most people.
And multi-use.
Could you, uh? Read to me the timetable for the Ford Foundation. Uh, I know that he's going to, it sounds like he's not going to give us back an estimate until the end of the year from what I'm almost hearing. So when's our next meeting with the Ford Foundation to be looked at for, uh, funding?
Right, right now we're looking at their February meeting. That's the next, next major meeting that they have. But I need to give them a better idea of what option we've selected and the costs involved.
Okay, so you have the basics from him tonight, kind of.
Yes.
Okay, so that, that's good to hear. Any other questions on this call before we move on? Okay, next item, uh. The motion to move the memorandum of understanding reverting. Community parking lot and to authorize the city administrator to sign. Mr. Colley, you want to speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Lowell School District submitted a conditional use permit application. For the parking lot that they want to construct at thirteen South Moth Street. They had to go through the conditional use permit because a parking lot is not allowed in that area. It's zone residential. But semi-public uses are allowed. So we negotiated a, a way to resolve that by having a community use aspect to the parking lot. As such, a, one of the conditions of approval that the planning commission. One of the conditions of approval that the planning commission. Put on the conditional use permit was for the school in the city to enter to an MOU. Formalizing that the can, unity use aspect. That's what we have tonight, the MOU is very simple. Section three goes into the community parking lot aspect of it, says that the district will let us use it during community events. Such as Blackberry Jam, movie nights, car cruises and so on. The school district has agreed to this. And the MOU is required to remain in effect for as long as the district uses that property for a parking lot. I'm requesting council approval of this so I can sign it and get it executed with the district.
They have a residence next door to it, have they said anything or is that any feedback there or?
No, there was no comments, there, there was a notice sent out, of course, to those residents, a part of the. Can, can, of what they had to show on their site plan and what the planning commissioner required is. Is some, um, some features like fencing to mitigate lights from the cars shining into the. Parking lots, so they, the, our, our planners and the planning commission took that into account when they reviewed the site.
Any other questions?
Is this in the lot on the corner of, of Moss and?
Or the big stone?
It'll function much like the other parking lots that the school has, it's just that this was so, the underlying zoning was residential when the school bought it, so.
Well, as they move out of the roadblock park, they need some more spaces, so. Okay, do you have a motion?
I'm with approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we're ready to move then. A motion to approve memorandum of understanding for regarding community park, uh, parking lot. And to authorize the city administrators to sign, is there any further discussion required, question, okay?
You can just make sure that I get the copy of that signed, I meant to bring a special copy so I can give it to Michelle for the school board meeting Monday.
Okay.
And we'll get that.
We can do that, worry too much.
I meant to bring a separate thing, but I.
Okay, all those in favor of motion to approve memorandum of understanding regarding community parking lot. And to authorize the city administrator to sign, signify by saying aye, aye, opposed? Are hearing any, thank you. Review loan application process for Business Oregon Special Public Works to finance the library city hall renovation project.
Thank you, Mayor, this is for council information tonight, so you know what steps I'm taking to obtain financing for the city hall. And library renovation project, I've talked to USDA, they do have a program that could help us. That with the being a federal program, they said it would probably be June at the earliest where we can get our funding line up. And that doesn't mess with our timeline, reached out to Business Oregon and they do have a, a program that can help us. I've had some extensive conversations with our regional development officer with Business Oregon. About our projects and the application process, she has said that. What we're trying to do fits within their special public works fund. She said, depending on how quickly I can get everything to her, it's possible that we could get a contract signed with them. December, January timeframe, so that was a factor in. In uh, my decision to move forward with Business Oregon, it's a low interest loan about two point five. Two point seven percent, thirty-year loan, the loan amortization schedule shows. A half a million dollar loan, twenty-four thousand dollar annual payment, I am moving forward with the assumption that we need five hundred thousand. If we don't need the full five hundred thousand, we can get it back. But to ensure we have enough financing to do this project, that's what I want to put in the application.
What, what'd you say that annual payment was?
About twenty-four thousand. Thirty, thirty-year loan of five hundred thousand dollars. So yeah, this just, I, I want to let you know what I'm doing before I get too far into it, see if you had any questions or, or concerns.
I'm glad you found something that did the timelines better.
Meaning you can always go out to government capital, but that would be, what would the, um, rate be for government capital?
So with government and capital, I have talked to them and they can get us the money. Soon as we ask. But it's the maximum they give us is eight years. And it is, it's low interest, less than three percent, but an eight-year loan is the annual debt service about seventy-five thousand. And.
But that's, that's the four hundred thousand, we're planning on bringing that down. By the sale of the property in the Ford.
That's correct.
Okay, so, so I'm interested in what would the amount be before we pull the trigger on this four hundred thousand dollar loan? Which you can always prepay or, you know, pay off early without penalty, I assume. I'm interested in what government capital could give us, assuming that we got the Ford family grant. And the property sales and finance that over the eight-year time at the less than three percent. I'm curious about that option, because that's what we're really looking for, we're not really looking to finance four hundred thousand dollars over thirty years. The, the agreement we came to last time was it was going to be offset by those things.
That's, that's correct, well, as soon as these properties sell, we're going to turn around and use that to pay down the principal. With Business Oregon though.
So would you like to?
But, but, but I don't want to, I don't want a thirty-year loan out there, no matter what the amount is, if we can get it under, you know. Yeah, yeah, an eight-year loan at less than three percent, that's like, um, a hundred and, a hundred thousand dollars versus four hundred thousand. Because then we prepay, you know, it, it, it makes a difference in the calculation when you look at this. Interest stuff.
I, I'm not sure I understand.
So what she's saying is, is she would like to have reported back to her. What the amount on an eight-year loan through the government capital on the, on the amount we would actually end up. Having a loan for, that we wouldn't pay off with the Ford Family Foundation funds and with the property sales funds. So the bottom line number that we end up left with after making um, uh, those other allocations. Applied to that, so if that ends up being seventy-five or a hundred thousand or a hundred and twenty-five thousand over eight years. Versus the same, same over the thirty years, and she's looking to get rid of the, that thirty-year aspect as well.
Right.
Okay, my, my, where I'm coming from with, with that. Is we don't know when these properties are going to sell, it could be three years from now and.
Well, then I'm not wild about that either, because I don't think we should go into construction without, I mean. This has been going on for a long time, these things have been marketed, I, that's not what we talked about, we didn't talk about. You know, I don't know, all right, you can bring back some options, but I'm not real wild about. About going into debt and then not getting these things that made it all work, which is what we talked about and what we approved. At our council meeting in terms of going forward, but I.
I, I.
I'm not.
I would all, I, I would feel like comfortable getting an eight-year loan and not selling any property, because then there's nothing in the budget. We'd have to turn right around and get the people.
Well, then maybe you don't do the construction until you get these things in place, the Ford Family Foundation grant and at least one property sale. To make it affordable to where the general fund could, could support the, the loan, but I, I, I.
I think we've crossed the.
This is.
I think we've crossed a bridge with the people, the community that we're going to do this, if we stop now and say. We're not going to do it until I think to. If you, if you. You'd have to sell at least a couple of the properties at a very minimum to do that, and if we go two or three years to sell them. And that'd be the worst case, all of a sudden then people are going to say, really, do we really need a library, you know?
I guess I'd just like to see a timeline on what we're talking about financing, because I, 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 there was nothing. That we talked about with financing four hundred thousand dollars with a loan without being offset by these things for thirty years, you're going to pay. I mean, that's just, it, it. It drags things out unnecessarily because you have the luxury of doing so. And I think that now is the time to sell the properties, I would get more aggressive on marketing the properties and spend more money that way. Than doing a thirty-year loan on something that's not going to be a thirty-year project, sorry, but this is not, I mean, it may be, because you know. If you temporary buildings that last for fifty years, but the whole idea of this project that we're doing. You're already talking about doing another city hall.
That's like ten years away, at least.
Yeah, but not thirty, so why finance it over thirty years?
This building.
Yeah, you're talking about a thirty-year loan.
It, it would, whether the city hall moves out or not, you're still going to be paying for the renovation on this building. Before it, you know, yes, and, and eventually sometime in the future, the, they'll go to the, we'll go to the council, whoever. Will go to the community and say, okay, do you want to build a building, and it may, I know the thing had five thousand square feet in it before, it may not need to be five thousand square feet. You know, it, it's going to be eight hundred square feet in a way Kurt's got it set up, maybe two thousand, but do it, you know, so I, I just, uh. I think we need to keep moving, keep moving forward.
I think, I think on some level, Maureen, we have to have. Some level of, of, um, beliefs that the properties will sell, that I, you know, Jeremy threw out that three-year number. But at some, at some point, we, we are going to have to make a leap of faith and say, these properties are going to sell, we, there's no guarantees. In a timeline that's going to support us making progress on the library unless at some point we do make that leap of faith.
Is the Business Oregon, um, loan program amenable to renegotiating? Not just prepaying, but reducing the term, can you switch it? We've got, we've got a Grange loan and we can pay that and modify it to a different term over, you know, and. So how much flexibility is there, I just, even if you're only financing a hundred thousand, over thirty years, that's just insane. When it's not a thirty-year project and we have this money.
I, I'm sure they could shorten the, the, the term, but we need to. Realize a, a shorter term means a higher payment and. If, if we want to move forward and wait until the property sell, you know, we're going to have to factor in, can we afford that higher? That payment, that's, that's the question. I think we could do a twenty-four thousand annual debt service payment, but a seventy-five thousand. You know, looking at eight-year loan, we can't afford.
But there's something in between those though, Jeremy, the point is, between those is the Ford Family Foundation Grant. We shouldn't move for, in my opinion, I won't get consensus on this, but in my opinion, we shouldn't move forward with the loan at all until we get that. Grant, because that's huge, that's huge, if that falls apart.
Well, we haven't drawn anything for you, whatever, Sam, we want to draw anything on it, we'll just have the loan. We, we, we're not going to make payments until we start drawing on it, I think, is that right or not?
Well, and that's my question of, Jeremy, was the question here is if funding assistance from a business organ. Who's alone, how will it be repaid, obviously that's general fund. Um, and then estimated data first draw, so we're talking about, based on Kurt's thing. We could possibly be under construction in March. The Ford Foundation meeting isn't until February, I don't think we should go under construction until we get at least. The Ford Grant secured, because I don't think we can go forward if we don't get that.
So I need some direction from council, because the understanding I had was perceived with this project. As quickly as possible, and it sounds to me like you don't want to, so I need some direction on. How you would like to proceed.
And, and that's why I was waiting to tell tonight's meeting, because I was trying to be open to how things were going and not try and do. Business in your office, but, so I didn't know that the Ford Grant meeting wasn't until February. Learned that tonight, that's great, they usually really quick about turning things around and I think we got a really good shot. I think we do, we've dealt with them before here, so they have a history with us, so I think that's a good thing, so probably March. So that's a good thing, don't expect the properties to be all closed and sold, but they are being marketed. And I know that there's at least one interested party in one of the lots, um, so I hope that. That marketing is going aggressively, but I, I just don't, I don't want us to get lazy. And say, well, we got this four hundred thousand dollar loan for a year, we're good, we don't have to do anything, I don't see that. So that's, this is good to learn the timing, but why do we have to go under construction in March before we hear from Ford?
Well, couldn't, couldn't we address that in February after the Ford Family Foundation meeting and say, okay. Um, we are at a point to where we have a level of confidence that it, 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 February meeting that we can go ahead and go. Give the approval for construction, but if we have any doubts, at that point we go, okay, let's put a stop to this for a moment until we gather ourselves. And um, get some assured, greater assurance from the Ford Family Foundation that the funding will be coming. And at that point, if we could make that decision in February, but, um, and just with an understanding with Bert and. You know, the bidders that were, were waiting for, for approval on that forty-five, for the approximately forty-faction of funding. Before we get the actual notice to, um, move forward with the construction.
So instead of February going out for bid and things like that, because no contractor is going to bid it. For, for much from now, when you start, what's, what's your price, you know, uh, we're really then looking at May going out for bids. Which means that we won't start till September.
The direction Jeremy's looking for is whether to apply for this loan, so if you apply for the loan for four hundred thousand dollars today over a thirty-year term. And, and there's a question about when you're going to give the first draw, could you set that for, say. May or something, I mean, that's where, you know, and, and can it be undone? Agreements are easy to get into, sometimes they're harder to get out of, what if you, um. We get the four hundred thousand dollars over thirty years approved and we haven't made any draws and then. Um, gee, best case, sugar daddy comes in, gives us, you know, ten bazillion dollars and we don't need the loan. Can you cancel it without penalty?
Absolutely, it's a public agency, they're, they're, they're not a bank, they're not in it to make money, they're in it to help.
Yeah, and so you can also then revise the terms, so we, we get the approval for the four hundred thousand on the outset. I was just worried that we were going to start making the draws and start paying before we had these other things in place that are crucial. To making this thing thin out.
Would be good if we had the property sold, you know, or one of, at least to be offsetting, uh, at least two or three years or else. Two or three years upfront or else we do think they're out that we're going to be needing, so that would be, that would be, uh.
I'm just more, I'm more concerned about Ford Grant, because that's. To the bottom line, but I still would like to not have, even if we, if we, in best case, we get it down to a hundred thousand dollars. That we don't finance that over thirty years, I think that's inappropriate. Because the general fund can support doing that, and then we're not so burdened to where we can't do other things down the road. Because we've got this debt schedule that has all this stuff for thirty years, that's not really up.
I think, I think that's kind of the idea that we don't want a burden to see and, uh. Uh, we'll, you know, we only draw what we need, or as we sell properties, we'll offset it and try to get it back down to as low as possible as soon as possible, so.
But the term as well as the, you see what I'm saying, not over thirty years, get it down to the. If we can afford twenty-four thousand dollars a year. If we can afford twenty four thousand dollars a year.
Or for newly, you know, refinance. Did, I, because I, I say, I want to speak from personal experience, I, I had a home loan, and what I ended up doing was, uh. Making payments early so that I paid it off before it was due, so, you know, I didn't have to. So if we either pay it off, but if I want, but I also had the loan, well, refinanced it for a different rate for a different number of years.
That's what I'm talking about.
With, if that happened, then we'd have to refinance the loan and, and then, uh, I tell you what, the interest rates are nice right now, but I. I tell you what, I'm not comfortable that, that we would see two and a half percent in two or three years, I think that, uh. We, we might be happy to, that we have what our loan right now, back out, even though. If we, if it'll be that when we close and on it in three, six months or whatever.
Back to your question, Jeremy, I, I, I think it's okay to go ahead, you know, which is what we voted on, was to, you know, pursue the four hundred thousand. But, but. My, at least for this one person, my approval of this project was not to finance four hundred thousand dollars over thirty years for this project. It was to be cost the city way less with these other things.
I don't think any of us want to pay on this building for thirty years, honestly.
Right, but I'm saying if the Ford Grant doesn't come through, I would like to revisit the whole decision.
We'll probably be on their percentage and a small amount as we're asking for.
I just want to go on record to say that, this.
So I, I have a loan amortization schedule pulled up here. Let's just plug in some assumptions, five hundred thousand. I believe that was the rate that Business Oregon gave me last thirty year loan. That's the annual payment. Let's assume. So the one ninety is what, I want to say that's what we put in for the Ford Found- Foundation. Let's say in twenty twenty four, we sell all those properties, half a million dollars.
Not all of them, I think, to be reasonable, just take the two.
So what do you want to put, what would you like to put in there?
Whatever is for the two residential properties. I, that was on something I didn't print it out. You know, not the east end of the park.
Okay, let's do, let's, let's say we sell both of those lots for a hundred and sixty. So. We would be paying on that through twenty twenty nine.
So that'd be your eight years.
Yeah, there you go, there you go to the government.
We could pay it down, okay.
So just for clarification, Maureen said four hundred thousand multiple times now, I've heard you say five hundred thousand multiple times now.
I think this project, when, when we bid it out, it's going to be five hundred thousand dollars.
I, I just want everybody to be talking the same number.
I, I'd rather ask for more financing and not need it, than I have enough financing for the project.
Because we're asking for five, but one ninety, hopefully from, from the Ford Foundation, so it gets us down to three.
And hopefully, we only really need four, so the hundred just goes back.
Yeah, the chances are with the way they.
Let's say we don't get the grant, yeah, now this becomes, we end up paying that off in twenty forty.
Yeah, see, that's.
Add the other properties out a couple of years later.
Yeah, then, then it's financed, so you don't need any. No, that's good, Jeremy, I like that, I like that.
It's all less than ten years, so.
I like that, but you're going to be on, you were going to get to the port after February meeting. No problem, we'll get to there and he's got the revised numbers that increases that a bit, that's great. It's great, and then, uh, continue to aggressively market these properties, the two that are ready to roll. Pretty ready to roll.
We just have the Highland one, we have to do the surveys for the rest.
But the Highland one is ready to roll?
Yes.
So you can close on Madison, if you got it, yeah, okay, all right, are you taking offers on that yet?
Not that our, no, the answer's no, no offense.
The, uh, when we dealt with the Ford Foundation, uh, so long ago, earlier this year. Uh, they seemed to very, be very positive and the people, local group, uh. And presenting it, and I guess initial feedback from whoever their local representatives were, that, uh, they looked, it looked good for.
No, I know, it's a great project, I think they'll, I really do think they'll.
I think we're still on track to.
Yeah, I think that's good. All right, sorry, any other questions?
So, so I need, I need some clarity, if there are no objections from council, I'm going to move forward with this application for five hundred thousand. I'm going to bring the contract to you for review at that time, or prior to that, you'd like to revise the terms, shouldn't they? The, the, the term of the loan. We, we can take care of it then, but I'd like to move forward with this. Are there any objections?
Sounds good. I think all council would agree with that.
And, and of course, like I said, before anything's finalized, I'll be.
We appreciate the work, we really do. Okay, old mayor comments, any public comments or anything? Anybody else want to add anything? Are there any not seeing anything?